Order six thirty. All board members are present except for Mr. Leishner, so we have a quorum.
Yep.
Yeah. All right. We do pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. No one here?
Open for us.
Yeah, we have Ms. We have Ms. Ms. Ackerman wanted to visit shortly with you guys. Clear your.
I do have a presentation, but you I don't have.
You're on the spot.
I need copies if you want, if that's okay.
Copies.
Sweet. There's my. This is kind of a packet for school board administration about kind of like what I'm going to talk about.
Is that after the fact then?
So.
Are we going with that right now?
No, no, it's basic. I've incorporated like the big stuff in there, but that just kind of if anyone wanted to look through it, ask questions, it has like the liability, safety, education, philosophy and everything. But basically I have this idea to host an international travel trip for Parkston high school students. It kind of came to me when I got some interest. We had a guest speaker in our classroom in Germany that was staying with my assistant and advisor. She's talking about how agriculture in her country and like travel that she's gotten to do and how she's really enjoyed it. And my freshmen were really excited to like, and I was like, I got to go to Europe when I was in high school. It was honestly one of the best opportunities I ever had. Too poor to do it in college, too busy now as an adult. Like it was great. And they're like, how'd you do it? And I was like, well, our teacher took us. I'm like, would you take us? And I was like, oh, I'll think about it, you know? And then like two weeks later, they cornered me and they're like, what are we doing? And I was like, okay, I'll call the company. And so they've been really excited. So I called the company, got some information, and it sounds like a great opportunity. So it's something I'd like to pursue. And so kind of my goal for the day through this company, it nothing has to be run through the school. Would not be another account for Craig to open. No money would be needed from the school to pursue it. And actually, there's zero liability for me, the teacher leading it, you guys, the board, the school district, anyone. So basically, they like to say that they are school approved, but not necessarily school affiliated. So basically, it's acknowledgement that a school employee and teacher would be leading this opportunity and putting it together and recruiting students. It would also kind of give me permission to host our various group meetings, like at the school, I could advertise it with posters and talk about it in class with them. So that would be pretty much what I'm aiming for, school approval. Kind of who I'm aiming for are first and foremost, high school students. They anyone under anyone over the age of eleven is eligible to travel personally, having traveled with middle school and high school. I would like to keep it towards like some of the older kids, like I even put through like what I'd be comfortable with since I'm kind of tentatively planning it for 2025. An eighth grader wanted to enroll, they'd have at least completed a year of high school and have kind of gotten to experience a little bit of maturity and everything. However, adults and community members could also enroll. It doesn't have to be limited. My own trip that I went on through this company in high school, there's a lot of parents, there's aunts, there's some community members who came on. And so they're really common to happen. They just have to pay an extra. They aren't expected to chaperone if they don't want to. However, there is an opportunity if they're willing, they can help chaperone and manage groups of kids abroad. And then like just in talking with some other teachers, it seemed really common, like not that I would have to do this, but it seems like there may be like other interests. There's a lot of schools around here who would do this, so it's pretty open, but I would really like to target our students here in Parkston. Benefits, obviously, first and foremost, I want this to be an educational. I'm not offering to babysit a bunch of children on a luxury vacation in Europe, but I want this to be an educational opportunity for them. Obviously, as a CTE teacher, I'm a big fan of like hands-on, like outside of the classroom learning. So I think it's a great opportunity. Obviously, there's an obvious connection more towards like global historical things and the kind of the area I have looked at with the kids who are interested, the tour we've picked out was like Greece and Italy. So kind of looking like the impact like those civilizations civilizations have had on everyone. So there's obviously connections there. And then it's kind of like that broad connection to understanding the world is a really big place, like how do I fit into it? How do other countries impact us? So like the personal development part is really kind of another thing that I think would be a great opportunity for students. You get them out of their comfort zones. You get to leave Parkston, South Dakota. I remember having that experience when I was a sophomore. It's like, it's kind of cheesy, but like, oh my gosh, the world is a way bigger place. And like kind of inspired my personal love of travel and like learning about new cultures and everything. So independence and flexibility, you get to be a little bit away from mom and dad. You get to kind of experience some new things. Communication skills obviously are even more important when there's like some language and cultural barriers, they get to learn that and then build some confidence hopefully in like those new situations. And obviously, I want it to be like a fun memory-making experience. I want them to try new things, new foods, learn something new, and maybe make some new friends and get to know people around them some more. One of the things that makes this more of an educational trip through this company EF, which I'll talk about at some point, but they can earn high school credit and looking and you enroll through them and like there's I not really, I need to investigate it more with like how it would align with South Dakota DOE. They have a program where they can enroll and do some pre-trip work and kind of do like a capstone presentation at the end. Like looking through like kind of the framework they have set up and like our senior experience, I think there could be like some connection maybe even to like incorporate like the capstone requirement that we now have. And I would be once I would like to look into it with the DOE a little bit, but I wonder if I could develop some sort of project that would meet the graduation requirement for Parkston by going on this trip and doing a project and researching something they'd like to learn through it. They also have like a general college credit option they can enroll through and pay for. They get access to a website that helps them with like all of their college applications, how they can incorporate like their experiences and what they've learned into like college applications and essays and the understanding with that. Benefit for me, I can also earn some CEUs for my own renewal or graduate credit that I would pay for by doing some of that pre-force work and everything. The company I've taken an interest in is EF Education First Tours. They have come really kind of highly recommended. They're one of the ones who have been around kind of the longest for over fifty years. It's the tour that I went on personally when I was in high school and I actually, when I was researching, two of my own high school teachers still do tours. One of them is kind of phasing out of it because she can't do the walking anymore, but the other is like, I'll be doing tours until I'm dead. She loves it, has a really positive experience. One of my friends just took a group of her kids on an egg-related tour. And I like that it's an emphasis on education, not vacation, which is what I really would like it to be. They do, there is a price, but they do try and keep it. One of their goals is like affordability. There are one of like the lower ones on the market. It's nice that I can book them years in advance, like I kind of like looked at 2025, just it would give us give everyone kind of a chance to assess their financial situation. We can do fundraising, gets really excited, like let's go next year. It's like, I don't think you understand what money is. I don't think you understand mom and dad can't just drop a check like for seven grand. So that's kind of an opportunity to schedule in advance. And then they are helpful with like setting deadlines and they have an online portal to make sure everyone has their passports in order and their visas. So that's really helpful for us. I also really appreciate the emphasis that they have on safety. It is kind of nerve-wracking too. I'm sure I'm not a parent, but I'm sure it's very nerve-wracking to send your kids in an airplane without you, or even when you're there, it's kind of new, uncharted territory. So they have offices all over the country. They're constantly monitoring and they send regular updates with like global news. They do routine spot checks and vetting to make sure that all of the tourist attractions and hotels are safe and clean and recommended. I'm not saying they're like a luxury resort, but they're safe and they're clean. And then any adult employees through the company, any adults like parent or community member who might come with us and myself as a group leader, they go through a free background check through the company, just to kind of ensure ultimately safety for the kids. They do offer some, they call it like their piece of pride program, that's kind of just kind of a backup plan for any like global natural disasters, terrorism threats, pandemics and like civil unrest. So they give me the opportunity to modify the tour and itinerary around that if they have enough notice. I could cancel it and take another another trip with the same kids like somewhere down the line, or the kids could get a refund completely free due to things outside of their control. And then there's lots of support while you're actually on the trip. So they have a twenty-four-seven like safety line that they're like I could call in the middle of the night if something goes wrong. Once we get there, there's a tour director who would stay with us from the second we land in Italy, and they will stay with us till we get to the airport to come home. And they are more professionally trained through the company. They're usually multilingual in the areas that we're going to. They're trained to help with your emergency situations and they are one of the people who travels with you the whole time, providing educational content, they're recommending places to go, they've been on the trip before. And then as a group leader, I'd be offered pre-tour training. It can be virtual for me, but if I get ten kids to sign up, they'll send me on a tour to Europe and it'll be just first-time group leaders and I'll take the time to train me on what life is like before I actually go and take kids of my own. Liability, regardless of whether like it's run through the school or not, they're covered. Everyone's covered, me, you, the school district. It's added to their general liability and it covers any on-tour incidents, injury or property damage like that might happen. Every kid who signs up and their parents have to sign a liability. And basically, there's also another thing that they're signing personally that releases everyone involved from general liability and then they can and will provide insurance to the school district upon request, showing that they are insured. And then something that can also be done with school districts, just as another wave, like if there's like a liability form that you guys or the administration would like, we could add that into and keep it on file. My kind of role would be like the group leader is like the title the company has. So basically, I would be responsible for selecting the itinerary, working with the company, fundraising, promoting, recruiting. I would be like the connection between the travel company and then all the parents. Kind of the same thing I do when we take FFA, collect the paperwork, set expectations, keep an eye on things. We would have meetings daily with the chaperones and tour directors. And then part of the agreement is like if things like really do go south, like I was like if some kid had to get hospitalized, I would stay with them until parents or anyone could fly over. And part of that is covered in like some of the insurance policies and everything on like I'd be the person who'd help them if they lost their passport or something. Extra chaperoning and supervision. So for every six students who enroll, that is a free chaperone spot. So the first six would pay for mine, and then if there were six more, then I could choose a chaperone to come with us and help. And that could be a parent, teacher, other staff, more staff member or other trusted adult. They really don't have a lot of requirements because they do that background check. And then obviously, with that ten people who enroll, I would get the in-person training. And then kind of like the trip plan. So the trip that I kind of chose with input from the kids who have been like really gung ho is called the Ancient Mediterranean Tour. It would be early summer in 2025, so anywhere kind of between May twenty-third and June eleventh, we'd leave from Who Falls and we'd go in Italy and Greece. The trip, we did add on a two-day extension in the Greek Isles, and then there are some excursions that they kind of looked at and pitched. Those are all built into the price tour. So it would, there's a length with like an itinerary and a quote and everything, but I'll cover that like in the next one. So the cost estimated for students is six thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars and then adults would be just over seven grand. Payment plans are available like through the company and it includes airfare, transportation, hotels, two meals a day, like basically any ticketed experience that we'd be doing. Extras that I chose to include but are kind of optional were those excursions like to the Roman catacombs. There's like a Greek feast evening with a traditional meal and then like a boat tour. And then I also just automatically included the Global Protection Plan, which is kind of like their basic travel insurance plan, just being after talking with the company and like as a person who's had to use travel insurance with different FFA, Airbnbs over the past year, there is some value there. So I did include it just so that way parents would know it's available. Prices may have gone up. The quote I got was just before their scheduled price increase for October first. I have another scheduled phone call with the company tomorrow. She was trying to hold it at that price till after she knew I had a board meeting and everything, and she was hoping they'd hold it for me as long as I could get a meeting scheduled in October, but it may have gone up just a little bit. I'll know more tomorrow. They're very upfront about what's not included in the cost. They are responsible for, and Greece and Italy don't require visas, so that's one less paperwork that we wouldn't need, but they'd be responsible for getting their own passport in time. One meal a day, lunch, snacks, beverages. Tipping is really common in some of the cultures, so like tipping the bus drivers, tipping the tour director at the end. If there is some free times that they were to use any like taxis to get anywhere or Ubers. Travel insurance is optional, they don't have to include that. And then if there's any like rescheduling, and they also have the option to pay for like a private room if they would like. Obviously, I know it's like a dirty word, but fundraising would definitely be involved, but just to kind of, I want this to be as affordable as possible. I would like to help the kids achieve this goal if it's something they're truly interested. So there's some ideas I've kind of gotten from some of the kids, some of the other teachers that I've talked with back in Iowa and my friend from South Dakota who's gone on, things that like worked really well for them. Obviously, some of the cancellation refunds. So there are some non-refundable fees, including like it costs ninety-five dollars upfront to enroll, and that's non-refundable. Travel insurance, any like late fees, like if they missed a payment or like there's an error with their like online banking, those are non-refundable, but kind of depending on how close we get to the trip would affect how much of that refund they got back unless they bought the plus travel plan. They also have the option to replace, like if they were unable to go, they could find a kid who wanted to go in their place and it wouldn't cost them a ton. There might be like an exchange fee. And then they do offer travel insurance, so there is like a risk-free enrollment, they call it. So for the first fourteen days after they enroll, they can cancel at any time, like maybe they kind of think about it, change their mind, different opportunity comes up, they can cancel. On the Global Protection Plan, it's the one ninety, and that's the one that I did include in the trip price. So that's just kind of illness fee, illness, if their bag gets lost, emergency evacuation, stuff like that. The difference that they really highlighted with me, the Global Protection Plus, they can cancel for any reason at all, at all, up to twenty-four hours prior. And then they're guaranteed that full refund minus the enrollment fee and travel insurance cost. And then just things to know, now, I don't know how much they influence like your decision, but just kind of things I could see like maybe causing potential issues, but it is meant to be like educational. I'm not advertising this as a luxury vacation and that's not how I'm presenting it to the kids. They should expect clean and safe, but they shouldn't expect to be running loose around Europe and doing whatever they want. The trip is planned, their itineraries are really not negotiable, but there is some free time aside. There are roommates and that's standard, they can't pay for an optional rooms, but it's for students' room, just like the trips that we do here through school, and then like two adults with their own bed. Depending on the size of our group, they may match us up with another group traveling through EF. I remember back on my trip, I think there was thirty-five of us and then the other fifteen that fit on the charter bus, they, there's like a group of Minnesota who came with us and like went through the tour with us, so that is a possibility. And then the drinking age is eighteen in Greece and Italy. The company does not have a policy outside of if you're under eighteen, you will not touch it and you will get sent home. They leave that up to schools, group leaders, et cetera. So that's just something to be aware of because you know the kids are going to Google it right away. So personally, I'm not interested in babysitting a bunch of drunk babies. That's my personal philosophy, but.
I think you'd make that very clear, the expectation.
Yes. So that is kind of, hopefully I hit like the big questions and points. Any questions that I can answer or?
So how many kids do you think you, any idea?
Right. Well, there's two kids who jumped me today. They, two kids already have six hundred dollars. So like they're, yeah, they're like, they're like, what are you talking to the board? It's like tonight, they're like, let's go. Like I'll show up to me and it's like, okay, let's just relax. But I have a few, like it's mainly, I think I have like five kids who are like really interested. I've talked to mom and dad, want to find out like the information. I've not advertised it outside of my freshman class, but it is something I would like to advertise throughout the school to all of the students, advertise in the community to see, get some interest there too.
So it's not necessarily related to any of the extracurricular things that you lead? This is just something you decide to do for any student, no matter what?
Yep.
Not have to be part of any program or any committee or any group or?
Anyone, any student who's interested in traveling and learning. So they do offer some like themed ones, like one of the ones I kind of looked at was they have, they do several egg themed ones. Actually, I looked at a really cool, it's a new one, sustainable farming in Italy. And the kids and I kind of like looked at it and it's like really hands-on, they go make chocolate, they do their perfume factory, olive oil and wine making and everything. And then they're like, well, if we want to get lots of people, we should maybe do like a general one. So I figured maybe just on the first one and maybe if it like works out, I'd be interested in exploring maybe some more concentrated trips, but this one's just kind of general educational for me.
That's a really cool, cool idea.
Just a blessing?
Blessing. Yep.
Yeah.
Knock yourself out.
I don't have any objections.
Nope.
Sounds like a cool idea.
So you think six thousand dollars is obtainable?
I think you can. I granted, ten years ago, my trip was way less expensive. I think it comes down to whether how much like parents want to pay and like how much kids are willing to work for it. I will provide as much as I can for kids to have the opportunity to work for it. I think they can do it, like even in our FFA, like each kid can handle a significant amount. So.
Suggestion that my past experience with these has been, there's an agreed-upon price point, and then that's all the fundraising elements aspect of things like that, you know? You have to at least get to that point. If we can go above and beyond, if time permits, we can continue to fill the bucket, but if not, then it's on the parents to fill the bucket with whatever's left. And once they know that threshold, that's something they all work for and they strive for to get to that point. And again, if it, if we can go above and beyond, or you can go above and beyond and keep doing that, so it's less cost to the parents, but parents have to know at a minimum, it's going to be this on your behalf and this on what you can do for fundraising to get to that total price point. So just a suggestion.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you for all the information. It was really good. Sounds like I want to go.
You can.
Yeah, come with, come with.
I heard that.
I'm looking for chaperones.
I heard. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we'll move to number five, which is approve agenda, changes to the agenda. There were no changes that I'm aware of, so I just need a motion to approve the agenda.
So move. Second. Move by Sean Peller, second by Turner. Any other discussion? Here in none, no, I'm favor say. All same sign, motion carried.
All right, no new conflicts of interest. So number seven is approve consent agenda. We will review the minutes from the September board meeting and the claims. The board will approve the resignation from Mary Whitehill, special education paraprofessional. Approve contract for Becca Gregowski, part-time PK, paraprofessional. So A is approve August minutes, B approve claims, C approve resignation, D approve contract.
September minutes, I missed the title.
Oh, oh, sorry about that, yeah.
That's my fault.
So are there any questions about any of those things? All right, so I just need a motion to approve, please.
So. Second. Move by Owen, second by Devoe to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Here in none, no, I'm favor say. All same sign, motion carried.
All right, we'll hear from the high school principal report.
I'll start with a little story about a couple of things that kind of show that hopefully our goal is in terms of a culture shift, you know, we really want our kiddos to be servant leaders that are full of school pride, school pride and school spirit. So I'm going to tell you two things that we've kind of got brought up recently that kind of show you that I feel like we're getting little glimpses of that and hopefully it's starting to catch up. First off would be this last Saturday, I was at youth football almost today and I got to the middle school volleyball tournament near the back half, and there was seven seventh grade boys that were incredible. And I mean, like the most energetic, full of school spirit crowd of seven I have ever seen in my entire life. And I kind of laughed, like, boy, these guys have gotten really juiced up. And one parent says, they've been doing this since nine o'clock this morning. Literally spent four and a half hours of their Saturday, they got rides, they planned it out, spent all day cheering on their classmates and just the energy in the gym, they got to the point where the other teams were cheering for each other just to try and counterbalance how much they were swaying the energy of the building. It was really kind of neat to do. So big props to them. And it was funny is, as you watched everything they're doing, they're doing everything the high school has been doing, right? So like they've been watching these junior, senior boys bring this energy to the volleyball, which I think they've dropped off a little more, you try and pick them up, but every cheer they were doing, all the stuff they're doing, it was night and day. So to watch that trickle-down effect, pretty cool. Kudos to those kids and pretty awesome. Right after homecoming, gave the seniors senior privileges. So now during study hall, during dual credit classes and lunch, they can leave the building, right? They have the freedom to do so as long as they keep their grades and their attitude and their effort up. Had a senior that even though he could take his senior privileges about one weekend, rather than take his senior privs and leave for the last two hours of the day, he sat down with a freshman that needed some help getting caught up, needed some help getting through some struggles, avoided his senior privileges, not because he was forced to, not because somebody asked him to, literally of his own accord. And that kind of servant leadership is exactly what I want to take home. So it's kind of fun to see some of those things happening. You know, you always hear about the baddest, want to share some of the cool, good things I've seen and hopefully we just see more and more of it becoming our constant reality. In terms of things that have happened since the last time we talked, PT conferences were about a week ago now, or a week and a half ago, I guess you'd say, and they went great. We had extremely high attendance, especially in the middle school. Our middle school, six through eight, they call about like thirteen or fourteen parents out of about a hundred showed up. So really great in the middle school and across the board, we were happy with conversations that were had and the attendance that we had, so really good. Our first quarter ends on Friday, so just around the corner, we'll be about halfway through the semester already. So this week will be a big push for us trying to make sure that everybody's gotten in all of their missing incomplete assignments, making stuff up. So a big push, but you know, kind of nice for the kids too, because it's almost like you get a fresh start halfway through, right? You know, so it's that idea of they gotta realize their semester grade is about halfway total, but then they get that fresh start and a lot of times you'll see kids kind of take a breath of fresh air and it's a good feel for the whole school. Coming up in the next week, as we get done with this first quarter, about nine weeks in, I'm going to start taking some surveys for both the staff and the students on how our new schedule has affected us both positively and possibly negatively. I'm really just looking for some feedback. I think there's a lot of positives to what we did, I think we did it for the right reasons, but kind of checking in the city and make sure that we don't have any unintended consequences. You know, as you talk to both staff, students and parents, I think one thing we're feeling is a lot of kids feel like they're losing time, like there's more on their plate and less time to do it. So trying to understand if that's an unintended consequence or if we got to adjust a few things. So I'll be surveying staff and students and hopefully I'll have some feel for you by the November board meeting as to whether or not we still like what we're doing or if there's any adjustments that have to be made. Last thing I'll talk about here, we had our first teacher development day. Would have been.
Monday, the second.
Monday, the second, thank you. So we could go today. And the things I kind of sent the high school and middle school staff on, one, I sent a video out about AI. I don't know if anybody watched Sixty Minutes last night, there's a, there's a piece on AI and also I had found a video online, if you've never delved into ChatGPT and what is coming around the corner with what AI can do for both staff and students, it is both exciting and terrifying at the same time. We've had some stuff where we're trying to make sure we are ahead of it and not a step behind, both the students and the technology. So we spent a lot of time that day, I kind of challenged them to read into it a little bit and then try some of it, and hopefully we'll continue to build upon that as the school year goes on. And also too, we had my math department and a couple other ones, working on some accreditation prep. We've got our school accreditation right around the corner in January. And so just trying to make sure that we are going through the processes we need to, to show the state that we are doing the things that they are asking us to do in terms of being ready to roll. So I had a good PD day. Uh, I thought, I thought that a lot of teachers, especially with the AI component, led to a lot of good discussion and hopefully some further training. Uh, hopefully we're finding some good uses as teachers. There's a lot of things that are great for as a teacher. Uh, and I want them to realize that it's not just the evil of what students can do to take shortcuts, but what we can do to help ourselves work a little smarter, not harder. With that said, do you guys have any questions?
I haven't gone down to personally see, but are you moved?
We are moved. Um, you know, the only thing that we're really waiting on. Is the window into the hallway, right? Like that is not there yet. I, I've talked to. You know, the Pitts guys a couple of different times and they keep being told it's coming, it's coming and we keep waiting because it's not here, it's not here. Uh, praying that sometime this week we'll be shocked and, and we'll lock some glass in a frame and. Because right now, I mean, the one thing is, is like really, we can't keep anybody out of high school, so you know, we're trying to. Manage that the best we can, but so far, everything seems to be on the up and up and good to go. Uh, so I'd say we are about ninety-eight percent moved in. The other thing we're waiting on is some furniture. My desk has not arrived yet, but I got an email today from Mr. Burning. Looks like next Monday. I will be able to have a desk in my office and put some stuff away and get rid of the boxes, so. Hoping. And then also the furniture for would be the teacher's option stuff too, so looking good with that. Um, got some other things in the works too. I think you guys will notice, hopefully by Christmas time, you'll see some window clings that our student council. Has agreed to fund, um, for both that high school entrance, the new high school entrance and the entrance into the, um. Armory that will make it really look cool. It'll pop when you're walking in. And so it's a design that you can see through from the inside. But coming on the outside end, it just looks like a really cool Parkston Trojans guy. So, uh, if you ever want to see. Kind of the mockups, I can forward them to you. Just send me an email and I'll forward it to you, but it looks pretty cool and I'm excited for when that finished product is done. Just little by little. Get the facelift and it looks nice. Anything else? Thank you guys, appreciate it. All right, good evening. I'll kind of echo Mr. Knibbling's thoughts there on just like the, the culture and the exciting, I think, the shift that's happening. Um, we at the elementary level start each month with, as you guys know, our mindsets and we started this year doing. Mindset assemblies to kind of kick things off and I go through and share a few things and. And then we play a game that the student council comes up with. Um, but we also have some teach to train, train to teach with.
Teach and train, yeah.
Teach and train. Students that worked with Ms. Kafka and have, you know, been in the elementary last couple of weeks. And now they've been partaking in the assembly and then we even had a senior who. Had senior privileges, could have been sleeping, but I talked to him and was like, hey, can you come into this? And he came in. Woke up early so he could be a part of it. And so I agree, it's been really positive for our younger kids to see the older kids. And they're bringing a real positive energy to everything that's happening here on the elementary end too, so really excited about that. Um, it's been a really, really positive, uh, thing for us. Um, he touched on end of the quarters coming up, that's this week. Uh, we had conferences, uh, very well attended, um, just missing a handful of parents and most of those. You know, just had a conflict and are going to make up their conference later, so very encouraged by that. I think the teachers did an outstanding job. Making sure they connected with families, um, and worked with them to make sure they found a time that worked within their schedule, to make sure they could get here. Um, and it was great seeing everybody in the building that night and, uh, really positive, um, evening. Um, the other thing we're doing with school culture that I just wanted to share, it's. Seems kind of like it would be pretty simple, but it's really taking off for us here in the elementary. Um, we talked about one of our school improvement goals was looking at. Our counselor kind of said that we needed to work on, um, student anxiety and, um, social conflict. And so when we sat down as a team, how, how could we work on addressing that? One of the things we thought about was, well, the most. Opportunity students have for that is when they're coming in from recess or maybe when they're transitioning from lunch to recess. And so we kind of did some brainstorming and, um. One of our teachers came up with the idea of something she had used in a previous district about giving compliments, which seems very simple. Um, but it's what we've implemented, um. Is that as you're walking your class to and from lunch or wherever it might be, another teacher sees your class in the hallway. And they say, hey, you're doing a great job walking in the hallway. I love how quiet you're being. I love how respectful you're being. Boom, that's a compliment. And then the teacher just keeps track with a simple tally on their board, but it's turning into this big competition. And if you win the most compliments for the week, we got these walking sticks. We got a real big walking stick, a real tall one and a little walking stick. Um, that I had, I got it from Ireland, so I had a, made up a story about how it has some magical powers to make you happy and smile and all this stuff, but. Um, anyways, the kids have just bought into it big time and it's been really, really positive. Um, for I think working towards that goal of what we want to lower anxiety because now it is nice and quiet, everybody. Um, understands why we're doing it and they're working just to hear that they're doing a good job. So it's been a really positive thing for. Uh, what we're doing. And the other part of that that we implemented was like a big buddy or a buddy system. And so we partnered up our fifth graders with, uh, preschool and kindergarten and fourth graders with kindergarteners. And so every morning, those older students are walking our younger ones in and helping them unpack their backpacks and. Transition into the building and it, I think it's really helped kind of lower some of that anxiety. You know, that sometimes students have coming into the building because they got the biggest kid walking in with them. Um, so that's been really positive. I think those are a couple of really. Uh, just fun things, great things that are happening right now in the building, um. That I wanted to just share with you guys. Uh, this week is fire safety week, so we have some firefighters coming in to talk to the kids. Uh, so that'll be another fun thing, um, that we got going on. So I think that's kind of, I could go on and on. Uh, the PD day was excellent. Teachers went. Uh, a couple of groups of teachers went to the Mount Vernon district and to the T district. Learned some great things and it's always great catching up with them and reflecting on what they brought back. As well as the ones that stayed and some of the work that they did. Um, I think it was a very rewarding day for the teachers and they really enjoyed that. Um, I'll transition to the activities. Uh, we're kind of. Believe it or not, kind of gearing up towards postseason here, so regular season stuff's kind of wrapping, wrapping up here. Uh, golf already had their state tournament. They had a great showing out there. Peyton Kane was top ten. Um, the team placed tenth overall. Uh, we have regions, they actually just moved regions up a day, so region cross country will be on Wednesday this week. Um, they're supposed to be on Thursday with the rain and storms coming. They moved that to Wednesday today. Uh, so they'll be competing there. Um, and then we have, um. Uh, state cheer and state cross country will be coming up here in a couple of, next weekend. Uh, so that's all coming really quickly. Football playoffs start next Thursday. And then volleyball will have a couple of weeks before they start region play, so everything's moving very quickly. Football just earned the number one overall seed. Um, in the, in the state playoffs, so that's pretty exciting. Um, you know, volleyball's in the top. Three in the region right now, so in a good spot there. Uh, so everything is coming together nicely. I think kids have been working hard and. You know, it's been fun to see the school spirit at the games and, um, been really positive, really fun fall, so. Uh, that's kind of what I have for the updates. Any questions for me?
What's the update on our scoreboard?
Oh, scoreboard, yep, we're working on that. It's supposed to actually be arriving here. Any week now, like within next week, the week after. I've had Brian Jackson out here. He's going to be working on the wiring component with it. Um, so I had him out here. I talked to them a little bit. He ended up calling Daktronics, got the lowdown on what he needs to do to make sure. We can have everything ready to go and so everything is on track to be shipped and. I gotta figure out how to raise it up and get it on the wall, but, um, yeah, it's all coming together, moving along. Daktronics has been great to work with. They've done a great job. They do all the work with our, um. Sponsors and get the information from them. Um, so I've done several Zooms, you know, with their Daktronics people on what. We're going to need to do and they build graphics for us to have loaded and so they kind of shared some of that stuff with me and. Yeah, there's a lot of stuff, but they've done a great job organizing it and hopefully be here soon, so, yeah.
Is there something wrong with the one scoreboard on the other end?
Uh, well, there was. Now it's fixed.
Oh, I just noticed it was off a couple of times maybe or.
Yep, yep, yeah, it wouldn't turn on.
Yeah.
Yep, it shorted out.
Brian said there was issues, yeah.
Yep, he can explain it to you if you ever.
Yeah, he did, multiple times.
But we got it fixed and yeah, we're back on track and.
Okay.
Yep, everything's good to go with that, so.
Co-ED situation working out okay?
I think so. I don't know if, hopefully everybody would say the same thing, but, um, yeah, it's, I think really. We communicate well together and it's, I think, helped really, I don't know, streamline things on our end. I mean, we're still working on a few little things, but overall. Um, I think it's been going really well. Hopefully you would echo those thoughts. Yeah, no, I, I think it's been going real well. Uh, me and Charles have had a good. Good relationship so far with the transportation aspect, which is kind of what I'm in charge of and then. Um, but because they're all on my end, all the program coordinators for, you know, ICC, LEF, BLA. Um, FFA, so on so forth, we've all had meetings and talked about fundraising goals and plans for the year, so. On my end, it's been good.
As far as running the board and stuff, is that a student staff or who are you looking at?
Uh, probably look at staff right away and see what we can find and then. Uh, we have some plans. Mr. Knibbling and I have talked about a couple of people that we have in mind, but. We still need to talk to some of those people, so. Uh, but yeah, we do have a plan of what we want to try to do and then I think eventually it'd be nice. You know, if we can work Tony's classes into that and get some students trained to be a part of what he's already doing. I mean, I think that would be a long-term goal. Um, so we could have people leaving here with just another tool in their toolbox of, you know, being well-rounded in that. Kind of broadcasting, graphic design, all that stuff that would go into that, so.
There were a lot of really positive comments about the homecoming day, week. Just heard a lot of really good things and the pepperella, you guys did a great job.
Oh.
It was fun, yeah. So, good job on that. And I heard a lot of really good comments from teachers about their day that they got to spend outside of the school. I don't know, do high school teachers do that too?
You mean like on the professional level?
Like when they went to Mount Vernon or T.
And last year, a lot of them took that. Um, I don't think anybody did this first one.
Okay.
But I'm sure they will by the end.
Yeah, a lot.
Last year was the same thing.
The couple I heard from were elementary teachers, so I didn't know if high school did it, but they were very positive about that. They said they really appreciated that opportunity, so. That's, that was a good idea.
Yeah, I think they're really utilizing their time. To get some good stuff, so, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Thanks guys.
All right, Mr. McInan.
Um, just the, the, the board gavel program, the dates that were in there. I think October is somewhat out of the question. I heard from Mr. Leishner, obviously. Um, all you guys, except Jill probably is not in the field, but I'm guessing some of you. Other, uh, board members too, got some agricultural expectations there, so he asked, uh, just some feedback from him. He could do the fourteenth of November, but he said even later would be, you know, helpful. So talking with Dr. Pogony, those are the dates I put in there, those, uh, October dates and then the November dates, but. Again, if it had to be later in November too.
The only one I could do of those dates was the sixth.
There's a junior high band choir concert on the fourteenth, right? So that's, I mean, maybe we're looking.
So if the sixth doesn't work for everyone, yeah, then we'll have to look for later.
Sometime in later.
I guess unless you guys all have.
Oh, I'll be frank with you, I think six work as of now, I just. It, the cattle home and, you know, and corn stocks. I mean, I'm one electric wire down from having a very long night, so. Yeah.
Well, if it's okay, I'll reach out, Dr. Pogony and look at some November later dates. My first thing that comes to my mind isn't it the week after, it may be Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I don't care. Doesn't matter to me.
I mean, that's kind of a transition phase then too, as far as things happening activity wise and things of that nature, so. But yeah, um, the other two other things that I.
So you're going to give us different dates?
I, I will reach out.
Scratch those and, okay.
I'll reach out to Dr. Pogony, because he said, he's the one that suggested even later in November.
Yeah, okay. I think we did later in November the last time we planned it, didn't we?
It was supposed to.
And we have bad weather or something, yeah.
I never got to that one, but hopefully we can avoid that, so. Um, just an update on our ADM, that was as of September twenty-ninth, was the last Friday. Um, and looking at Infiniti Campus and that's where they pulled by, plus their loan sheets. Um, we, nothing's ever in stone until they get the sheet back from the department a bit. But what we can acquire and count within the all elements of our system, we're look, I'm hoping to get something back that says five hundred and forty-five kids. So we would be potentially, if we built it on five thirty, um, fifteen plus kids ahead, so. We'll see what they say about, just a quick update there. And then, Mr. Fisher and I. We just did this, that's why it's not in here, is met with a playground consultant. Um, the grant that I had referenced here a while back over the summer, um, we finally got ahold of her and she came from Nebraska and. Um, how we met with her, probably sixty, ninety minutes and very productive, so. In a nutshell, um, the grant is real. Um, I asked again, we kind of, we're going to miss the grant date because it closes at the end of October. But I asked for assurance that, you know, the next grant period, which is this coming year then in twenty-four. She said, you're fine, promise you, I get to decide where the grants go. You're one of our recipients and you just got to fill out the paperwork again, which is no big deal, so. She's going to put three renditions together and get it back to us and, uh, we'll take it back to, um, the playground committee. Um, that Mr. Fisher's got established and we'll bring to you guys too for, um, to see that, but it's real. I mean, uh, it, the dollars are for an actual one, a large piece of equipment. Um, but, I mean, we already kind of had this notion a couple of years ago, somewhere between a hundred, hundred and twenty-five, hundred and fifty thousand on our part. You know, for upgrades out there and investments, well, if that comes to fruition, they'll match that. I mean, so if we put in a hundred, they're putting in a hundred. I mean, so all of a sudden. You got two hundred thousand dollar worth of equipment potentially set out there. And that will help us. Do some of the other pieces out there that we told her were of interest and the playground committee had put a rendering together that. They would like to see pieces out there, so just quick update on that, that that's a real thing and. I know the PTO had reached out to me and I sat down with, um, them and, and assured them that. This was going to happen and I think that's going to be a little of their focus too in their fundraising efforts is to. Put some specific pieces out on the playground as well that they could help fund, so they could give them something to. Invest in as well, so. That's all I have.
Anybody have questions on anything? All right, we'll move to discussion items. Uh, discussion item A is to review policy manual. The following ASBSE policies are being presented for review and a first reading, CI, CIA, CK and CM. Those are all included in the packet for our first review.
Yeah, just a quick, it's administrative staff evaluation, principal job description, um, and CIA. And then CK is program consultant, CM is school district annual report. Um, all, those are things that are, I think, on the books right now, the compliance aspect of things. Probably if it's not something that we do or we shouldn't be doing or think we should be doing, I would make those suggestions to you, so. I don't see anything in the current policies as they're written that need any changes or attention drawn to them, so.
Anybody have questions about any of those? All right, we'll move to discussion item B. Uh, the following ASBSE policies are being presented for review and a second reading. CF, CGA, CGB, CH, CHD. Those were included last month. Do you guys have any questions on any of those? All right, discussion item C is to review policy manual. Following ASBSE policies are being presented for review and adoption. CBG, CC, CCB, CDCE. If there aren't any questions on those, just need a motion to approve.
Move by Sean Feller, second by Turner to approve following ASBSE policies. CBG, CC, CCB, CD and CE. Any other discussion? Here none on favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carried.
Discussion item D is building project. The school board will hear an update on the HVAC project and new building project and discuss possible change orders associated with the project.
I have no specific change orders, but I did put a document in your packet. The project sat for two weeks because there was no work to be done. Um, the brick layers were out of brick. Uh, so the burnished block component that we discussed last month, um, everything came to fruition come Thursday, so Thursday night, the block showed up. Friday morning, Williams Masonry was out there at six-thirty and it was cold Friday morning and they were out there slopping on mud and brick was going up, so. Um, the burnished block is here, so we don't have to worry about that whole scenario and, and putting the, the inside hallway and paint and stuff, so that's been a good thing. Um, and then the next thing that was brought to my attention was. Um, the colony that creates the precast was having some production issues, so. Um, and visiting with that, uh, particular individual and the head of, um, that company. Um, their resolution for that was to contract with another colony, um, up by Falkton, does the same thing. Um, showed a couple of samples that he had brought down on the trailer. And the biggest thing was from that Falkton component and that's the drawing and the rendition that you put in there is lessening the number of reveals. And that's the drawing and the rendition that you put in there is lessening the number of reveals, you know, on the front side of, or essentially the west side of the building. So, uh, went from tw- eight, every eight inches to a twelve-inch reveal. So, when you look at it aesthetically, it really doesn't look that different. Um, it's just less of them. And the whole thing is it's gonna expedite production. They have to put less, however they make their reveals, it's less things that they have to put into their production. So, um, in order to keep it moving, I, I gave them, I guess, the permission and the go-ahead with the rendition, knowing that we were having a board meeting and, um, tonight. The production aspect, I was told that once I visited with them last week, that Falkton Company would start cranking it out. So, um, steel show, or the steel's been here, the crane's on site. Um, they set some of the rafters on what would be the wrestling room. Like I said, the brick continues to go up on the inside. So, I think you're gonna see a lot of things moving after two-week lull there. And the whole goal is, is to get everything up, get it sealed up, and get it wrapped up before the snow really flies and the cold weather sets in. So, um, the other part of, I put in your board packet is circling back to the HAVC project. Um, the NPR, the west side got done, they got the coil put in it. I think they're, um, scheduled to do the east side. It was either this week or this coming week that they were gonna start tearing into that east side. And the main thing is to get it done before the weather really hits so we don't lose production on heat in there because it's tied into the boiler system right over here, so, um, we'll get that addressed here. But the main component is, again, I've lost the entire system on the elementary end and the software. I cannot see anything on the software. And if I can't see it, they can't see it, the train. There's no way to do any manipulations with their temperatures. Cold, hot, running, not running. Um, I spent a whole day last week, I don't remember what day he was here, but him and I, hacking the cubby hole back here, trying to figure out why. And it was so random. He doesn't have an idea. We were putting wires together this way, that way. The most we ever got back, I think, was fifteen rooms. When we tied this one together and tied that one together and took this one off, we lost one, gained one, lost them all, got back to maybe twelve. My point is, eight hours we spent here. The last time we did this, the bill, I reached out to Climate Systems. They're the ones that are taking over the whole footprint when it's all said and done. They're down in the high school end on the software. That's their footprint now. What would it take for them to come and take over this? Because Craig and I have talked, and the principals, I know the nature of the system. It's, it's gonna dysfunction and it dysfunctions practically every day. And I, I've told you guys this before, I spend the first half hour of my day in the system making adjustments to the temperatures because they just don't work. So, I manipulate it manually to make it comfortable for the teachers and the kids. Well, if I don't have that ability, I don't know what to do anymore. Reaching out to Climate Systems, "Would you take it over? Could you do that?" "Yeah." He said, "But I can't do it for what's in the budget for the price, or it's gonna be above and beyond." He said, "Now I'm doing it twice. I'll do it once for what we said we would do it for. But now if I go in and take everything over, they gotta come in and do their own things, put their own controls on it so they can see it. And then it was time to rip it out in the spring. They gotta take it all off and then put the new unit in and put it all back on." I said, "Well, give me a ballpark." He did some, he said, "I'll call you back." He looked at a few things, talked to a few people. Um, he just spitballed and he said, "For the labor part of it, and most of the stuff is the wire is ran, but we have some other components we'd have to do." He said, "You're probably looking at twelve to fifteen." So, it's investing that much money on the front side that is not in the project that would come potentially out of our pocket. Now, that's the rub, not our pocket, not our pocket, right? Well, I don't know how far we wanna go with the two entities, Climate System to one. And that's the first thing he asked me. He said, "Well, you're not gonna make me pay for it again, are ya?" Cause he paid for it once and now the system, the software disappeared again. No rhyme or reason. And he, I think they were gracious enough to do it the first time. So, I think, now I'm onto the other component of the general on this whole project and not getting completed, which the contract said. And it didn't come to fruition. So, too truly responsible for this. Alls I know is I'm in a bind with winter coming. They can't figure it out, at least to this point, we haven't been able to figure it out. I don't know how to proceed with that. So, I asked for him to give me that number. I told him I'd talk to you guys. Any ideas, ideas, solutions? If we wanna go after the general? I mean, do you want me to, I guess, get more stern than I've already been stern? Trust me, and I've been stern. I can do that. But I don't know what else to do because I got, the most I got back now, I can see, there's, I can't, there's twelve rooms I can't see out of this footprint down here. So, I got twelve rooms sitting there that I have no control over. And a few of them are critical, meaning in the two years that I've been here, there's a few of those rooms that I spend an inordinate amount of time on making comfortable. And those are a couple of rooms that I can't see. So, it's only a short period of time before it starts. Too hot, too cold, turn it up, turn it down, can you turn it on? It doesn't work. And Train, the guy that I got coming, very nice guy, does everything he can. He just tries to, doing all the stuff that he can pull out of his pocket as far as the tricks to try to get it to work. But putting them on the schedule, trying to get them to schedule, it took him two weeks to get, for him to get here. So, if I need somebody to come fix something on the Train side of things, they're not coming the next day. Maybe lucky by the end of the week if I begged hard enough. So, anyway, I wanted to at least give you that insight, update you on that. If you got any input for me, I'll take it, but, um, that's a number, I guess.
Well, I mean, do, with the contract documents, the, the way they set, I mean, they gotta make it right. Do they not? I mean.
One would think, but there's been some hesitation, even with some of the failures that we've talked about. There's been some heel dragging and, you know, hauling through.
I mean, I would try to hold their hand on fire. I mean, you know, and I, I don't know how much further I guess without push it, but, I mean, gotta make it right.
Right.
Oh, this, that, that's pretty new. Isn't it from the flood? Will we replace that?
Not that stuff.
No, not that stuff? Okay.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
None of your cabinet heaters or your controls have ever been replaced?
Okay. I just, that was the same company for some of the other stuff, wasn't it?
Not Train.
Oh.
Mitchell Plumbing and Heating that did all the boiler room area. That was all in the boiler room, that other stuff. It wasn't, uh, it was, uh, the boilers themselves. Now, was there a whole new unit in there? I don't remember.
There is now.
I was gonna say, wait, there is, I thought there was, yeah.
Everything in the boiler room.
Yes, no.
But that's just the one, that's, but the problem is the controls we have in the rooms reading that, right? That's a problem. Those weren't.
But the control wasn't new, right? Right? The control that we were using in there wasn't new, but everything else was. Didn't they hook the old, I don't know, maybe I'm.
The comm head is the same comm head.
Mm-hmm.
I've seen it. I've, I've been playing in it.
Cause they had a hard time even, because, well, I might have an old one around.
It's antiquated, so it's not new. But it's, it, it's a daisy chain, so think about it, where it comes from some wire and it goes up, down into the unit, comes up out of the unit, goes down in it, goes up out of the unit. There's something within the, the, the comm, the fiber, the wire, that it's, you know, the first time we got lucky, we unhooked that one where we thought there was backfeed. And I know there was backfeed coming through and coming down this hallway from that high school end. That's where we found it. We unhooked one wire, which still didn't make any sense because we were breaking the daisy chain concept. But I didn't care, I didn't question it. It all lit up, I got every room back. And then a month later, for whatever reason, we had an issue in two-twelve. They came and told me, "It kinda stinks in here." So, I went down there and looked and went outside. Yeah, the unit was tripped, the AC condensing unit was tripped. But all the flags that it's throwing is now across the hallway in two-twelve is all the flags that it's throwing and trying to diagnose where the daisy chain's being broken and why it won't communicate. All right, half of it I see, the other half I can't see, or you plugged this wire or that wire. Well, now you got two more. Well, you plugged this wire now because you needed that one. That made everything disappear. Yeah, it's like, mine, I mean, so. But I, I mean, I'll circle back again and let them know that the issue is the same. And this is what potentially, and my rationale for bringing Climate System in and taking it over is because then I know with their system and their comm that at least I'll be able to see all things on the footprint and they can help control it then. Where this other scenario that we're living right now, there's no diagnosed resolution to the problem.
So, but you said if the other system takes over, we have to pay a fee now? And then there would be fees later too?
No, it's just now to put all of their, the human resources to connect it all. Because then they have to turn around in the spring of the year, disconnect it all, and then put it all back.
That's what I mean, would they charge you then again for that?
That's in the project.
Oh, okay.
That's in the scope of the project.
Well, if I look at the situation right now, you're not comfortable going into winter, right? And, and if, and if it doesn't work, we have cold classrooms.
Yeah.
And that's not good.
Yep.
So, it would appear to me that I think you get that company in here to get something fixed because Train ain't gonna come here. And then let's go after, we have to go after in the end, but we need it fixed.
Fight the battle on the monetary side.
I was gonna say, I don't.
We better get it fixed because you can't spend half your day down there writing check-ins, let alone not knowing if the.
And kids shouldn't have to be freezing at school.
We had a cold classroom.
That's the main thing.
Yeah.
Teachers and kids.
Yeah, yeah, teachers do, I don't, I mean, just kids, but, yeah.
It's because I don't think we can rely on Train to try to.
Yeah, I would agree, yeah. I mean, the individual's been great. I mean, he has put in due diligence into it and trying to find a resolution for it. And he's, he's made phone calls, it's not just him. He's reaching out to his other, you know, associates in the field. And it's kinda, geez, never heard of that before, geez, don't know. I went to the point where I convinced the guy, changed the whole comm head out. Let's see if that's the issue, if it's not talking the way it should be talking. Well, I got one in the shop, it's used. I said, "All right, let's get it in here." "Oh, okay." And he had to reconfigure it because it came out of someplace in Iowa. And did all that and manipulated all, "Yep, there it is, okay, our footprint shows up." Never, it was the same. Never got, we weren't one step further ahead than the two hours that it took to do it.
But you think this other company, Mr. McInan, can fix it?
When I talked to Dean Welch from Climate Systems, if they came in and put their controls on and the wires there and it hooked into their system, then we'll be able to manipulate every cabinet in every classroom and do the comfort control.
Which is the same as on that end.
Which is the same as on that end. And they're the ones that were taking over the whole footprint anyway.
Yeah, that makes sense.
If we were done like we were supposed to be done, so.
Was that my vote today? And, and I think if it comes to the point of recognizing the dollar figure, come to, have them come to a board meeting and they can look us in the eye.
Right.
And see why it's not getting done or hasn't gotten done.
Yeah.
Then it is all on you.
Okay, I can do that. If everybody's in agreement there, I mean, that's, that's what I was looking for, some direction there. Absolutely. Thank you.
So, they'll be able to do that, like, soon?
Um, I.
Enough that it will be helpful for the season?
We talked about a couple of dates there, but it's, you know, they got projects they're working on right now too. And to pull somebody off of something there, that's something that he would have to, to, to take a hard look at, so. But he told me he would do whatever he could to help.
Okay. Do they need a motion or anything? You're just gonna get prices or what?
I, I didn't, he gave me a ballpark figure, but I don't have a specific quote.
Okay, okay.
You know, if we wanna move forward with that, and I can tell you that, and worry about the cost component of it after the fact because we're drawing the line and saying, "We're paying for it anyway." I mean, we wanna go to court, go to court, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, okay. Anything else from?
That's good in the building.
Do you guys have any, anything else? Okay. All right, so we'll move to discussion item E is ASBSE Delegate Assembly. School board will discuss the ASBSE resolutions for that upcoming legislative session and sending represent, representation to the delegate assembly.
Sorry, just had one quick question, sorry. On the building out here, so with the burnage block coming in now, are we close to being on schedule?
Yeah, yeah, once they get that, cause those guys got half the wall up ready.
They even got the brick on top of the burnage that's regular, I saw today.
Yeah. So, he's got a good crew here now. He told me, because I talked to him last, well, at the last volleyball game last week, he had a, a granddaughter playing. He came and visited with me and I asked him and he said, "Well, they were finishing one project up and it was done." He said, "I got everybody coming here." He said, "We'll have that up in a matter of a week."
I know we can't control Mother Nature, but I think all of our votes would be to try and get it enclosed. Does that seem realistic?
Yeah, I think so. And when I talked to Pitts, um, former man and the architect at last construction, that was last week we were here, um, he, or two, ten days ago, that if they get the pre-cast here, that getting it set and getting the steel on it is well within the realm of possibility before we get to that, what you call, winter. Now, like you said, you can't control Mother Nature. If it slaps us in the face with a foot and it never goes away from that.
Sure.
From that day, you know, we don't give a change in temperature, it doesn't warm back up to get rid of it, who knows?
But that would resolve a lot of extra heating we'd have to do otherwise.
Yeah, well, you know, he gave me that ballpark figure. And if we have to pour cement in there and it's open.
Yep.
You got ground heaters and ground blankets, thawing blankets on it to heat it up to a point where you can pour mud on it.
And that's not in the bid, right?
No, but, I mean, there is a little bit for that, but then, you know, they're gonna tell you, "Well, that's what your contingency is for." And we had three hundred, three hundred thousand in that.
Got it.
Yep, the unknowns, right? The unplanned, so. Good?
Yeah, sorry.
No, good. I think the only thing, you know, I put those in your packet, those don't change much from year to year, and I'm talking about the resolutions. And this is for your associate, the school board's parent. And this is what they take for a legislative platform. The real question that you guys have to decide is this November, excuse me, seventeenth. And I don't care. I mean, I think we've, I don't know if we've had anybody in the past go, but that's the date that that chosen delegate. And I just send in the name if there's a name to send in. If not, it's not the end of the world. You won't be the only school district that's not represented at the Delegate Assembly. So, that's all I'm looking for from you guys, if that's the need to do that, so.
That's the week of state volleyball, so if we would get lucky enough to go, I would not be able to attend that. Scott wouldn't either, so. Jed, if you wanna go to Pier?
Matt had some input in there last year.
Yeah, or you? I don't.
It's a Friday.
Doesn't matter.
It's not an idea, but.
Watch it. Yeah, I'd go if nobody else can.
I'm down my whole next weekend.
I mean, I can throw a name.
Cause Jill is the delegate right now.
I am the one, yeah.
Jed was the alternate according to the organizational minutes.
Yeah, I just won't be able to. I don't wanna plan on being able to go and then we, we make it, that would be my luck.
You can appoint whoever you want.
You're appointed.
Put me down.
John's gonna do it, thanks, John. You rock. I'll buy you a pie. I'll get you a pie for that. All right, anything else? All right, discussion item act, the school calendar change. The school board will discuss the proposed changes to school calendar for the month of November.
And it's probably seen as an excuse, but when we set the calendar back in March, the Activities Association typically does not have their calendar set. The events are there, but as far as the actual dates and times of the events are not in there. So I think I looked as late as even early summer and it still hadn't designated as to when our class of football played. So looking upon it now, knowing it was coming up, take a look at it, and I did not realize, I thought it would probably stay in the same schedule. But 9AA, instead of last year when we were fortunate enough to make it, we played a 10 o'clock game, now 9AA plays a 7:00 PM game. So we had taken the November 9th, made it a developmental day, thinking that 10 o'clock, just like we were last year, and potentially playing in first state championship. Well, conversation between Mr. Kniffling, Mr. Fisher, and myself was, would it behoove us and make more sense now that it's 7:00 PM? And we always had the Veterans Day program trying to sandwiched in there, too, that if we went to school on the night, instead of not on the next day, the 10, that the fact that we don't play it till 7:00 PM, we could get some of those, we could come to school, we could have a Veterans Day program, we could potentially even do a pep rally in that component, 'cause it's the day of, send them off, you know, have a day of school, get out of here and go to Vermillion on that night. And the fact that it's a 7:00 game, because it's on TV, you're probably looking at a competitive event. You're, the game is done at 9:30, it's two and a half hours, 2:45. Depends on who you're playing. You know, you're out of there 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, and then turn around and have school the next day, making kids come, pushing the envelope there. So it's not ideal. Mr. Leishner, basically, his feedback to me was, you know, "I'm fine with what the rest of the school board does on the calendar issue. The bigger point here is not to have the Activities Association running our schools," which I understand. They need to get their schedules out sooner. If the schools, so the plans, or the schools can plan ahead and do that. So he wanted me to reach out to Activities Association and tell them maybe they need to be a little bit more, I guess, timely with setting their event schedule.
It's all based on USD's football schedule, though?
Sure. Another component in there.
Right, because if USD is away, then the state high school, he tries to use the whole weekend. But if they're home, then they need to get all that stuff in, they need to get it...
So there's only one game on Saturday, like 11 AAA? A nine-man plays all their games on Thursday, 11, but 11 AAA?
Two on Saturday, but before there were three.
Three, yeah.
Because USD is away this year, now there's two and two on Friday and Saturday, I believe.
No, USD's home.
That's not what it says on the thing.
Oh, then there is only one.
I think there's three games on Thursday, three on Friday, and one on Saturday.
USD is home.
USD's home.
Yeah, so they want them out of there.
USD's away, that makes spread it all out.
Okay. So you wanna have school on the night and off the 10th?
Essentially just flip-flopping the two days. Versus, I mean, our calendar says the 9th off and go to school on the 10th. But now knowing what the situation is, that we would flip-flop those two days.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And the sooner we can let them, the public know, or parents know, to make any adjustments. And would we do anything different if we, in my opinion, if we weren't, if we did not qualify for that? If we make the decision, change it, then that's what we stay with regardless of whether we go or not.
Yeah, that's fine, I think.
That's just my feedback.
To change it is okay? Do we need a motion to approve that?
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll move.
Move by Neeble, second by Turner, to make November 9th a school day and have November 10th as a teacher development day with no students. Any other discussion? Any non-nominal favors, yeah?
Hi.
Full same sign? Motion carried.
All right, number 10 is action items, and the only action item is to approve financial report. Any questions, or Craig, you're just gonna go over things, or?
Your orange sheet and your...
Yep, yep. I sure can. As you can see, I did do a million-dollar transfer. I didn't transfer all of it that we, that probably, that we've spent so far. 'Cause I think, what, did it, was it 4.8 we're down to, or something like that, on that last payout?
For the project?
That we've actually... I don't have that, sorry, off the top of my head. It's in here. 'Cause we approved another bill for...
Yeah, for another...
For 500,000. I wanted to say it was down to, we've already used 4.8, or we are down to 4.8 left.
So we're into it for a million and a half, is probably... If you have 4.8...
Here it is. So, yeah, balance to finish was, oh, 4.287234 after this last payment. So I can do another almost million to catch up, but, but I know the balance looks, shows negative a little bit left in the capital. I remember next month is taxes, so they'll be starting to come in and make that positive again, because once again, all our expenditures are pretty much, for the most part, for the year, outside of the project are done, other than Mr. Kniffling's stuff that'll be coming in, coming up here. But other than that, though, everything looks, when you look comparable for the last four years or so, the general fund balance looks good. Special education is down a little bit, but we've had some of those summer, those that we talked about last month. That's one of the reasons why that that went down a little. School lunch is still up there. We got our review coming here, November 14th or 15th, I think, is the onsite review. Lisa and I watched a video, or watched a training video today of all the stuff that we have to do before they come onsite, we gotta get into them. So we'll see how that goes. But they did mention that training video, that a lot of schools had an excess fund balance. Now, this year they are going up to the five-month operating expenditures as a waiver, but that's not ongoing. So we still eventually gotta get, five-month, we might be a little bit better getting down to there, but three-month one would not have been. Other than that, do you guys have any questions on there?
So, so what's the chances, Craig, that we're gonna have to, if we're not down, are they gonna, are we gonna have to pay some back?
The only thing I can think of that we may have to pay back is those meals last year, if that waiver wasn't in place last year to allow them to do that. As far as the, 'cause you have a two-year plan to pay, to get rid of the money. Only part of it is when we did the two-year plan first time, it was those free lunch Fridays, and now we can't do that, so we're waiting to see. That would be the only thing I can think of that we might have to pay some of those back. Federal reimbursement, besides four.
I was thinking out of the box here just a little bit, not knowing if you, if we have a two-year plan, we can probably see it, we can work it down. But it goes back to some of my days when I had some convenience stores and you would order sometimes some product, bigger quantities, got a bit of price. Now, I don't know if that works here or not. But would there be any, I'm just thinking out of the box here, the freezer room? Is there ways of adding some freezer space if it would help us?
You mean building on and adding a freezer?
I'm, I'm thinking, I'm just trying to, I, I just don't wanna get to a point where we have to pay back money.
Yeah. Well, that's what I think, the next thing would be buy a Cadillac dishwasher again. That's gonna be 30,000. I mean, that's the last piece of equipment that we really haven't replaced.
I understand.
And, I mean, I bought a new oven, we bought a warming unit, we bought new trays out front, we bought...
'Cause you and I both remember when we had that at deficit.
Yeah. And we had to supplement 25,000 one year.
Yeah. And so I just, yeah.
Your auditor didn't like that, either.
What's that? Having to do that?
Supplementing it.
But that's what everybody, I mean, for the most part, have to do.
Right.
But they did mention, I was surprised in that video, that a lot of people have a cash balance issue. So we're not in the, right now, currently, which I was surprised in that training, because when I talk to people, they don't say that. It's only about a handful of us that I know of. But maybe it's just that their balances are raising, rising because of the excess funds. Because it's all supply chain assistance grants now.
Yeah.
Stuff, so... That we received as well, again, what was it, 14,000?
14,000.
Yeah.
It's too bad you can't just see something you really need to. You know, like if you have something you really need, you have shit there.
But I know when they, when they do come, we'll talk to them about, what else can we do?
Sure. So...
It's actually not a bad idea, add something like that.
We didn't, we asked, we may be asking for forgiveness rather than a blessing on the front side back to last spring when we did that. When you add it all up, quite honestly, I mean, it's probably a decent-sized number, but it's not gonna be...
Probably still not getting us down to the three months operating expenditure.
No, it's not gonna make that big of an impact. And we may have to pay that back because we were not in compliance with the waiver, 'cause there would, there shouldn't have been a waiver, it didn't extend. So we kinda anticipate that, quite honestly, but it's still not gonna be a number that's gonna help us rectify what our fund balances.
Pretty much, doesn't seem like an option.
This year it's five. But it's not ongoing five. It's because of all the excess funding that the food service is getting.
Sure. So they decreased it because of that?
That's why they made it five months per year. The federal government didn't allow them to do that. Instead of the, maybe giving the free meals waiver that they used to allow, so...